If we want to know the way to call this meeting quarter, I'll put in the pledge.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our first item of business this evening will be the election of officers for 2025. Do I have a nomination or declaration for the position of president?
I'd like to make a nomination for Tim Patterson for president.
Is there a second?
I'd like to make a declaration that I would like to keep the position as president for 2025.
And I would like to nominate Sharon for president.
Thank you.
I'll second Bob's motion.
Okay, so on Kay's motion, died for lack of a second. So now Bob has made a motion and Scott has seconded it. So we'll take a roll call vote on Sharon being president. Winta?
Yes.
Riker-Patton?
Yeah.
Patterson?
Yes.
Nobby?
Yes.
Bevington?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Cranville?
Thank you.
Okay, so that motion carries and you're in charge now. Okay. So you have to be the vice president.
Thank you. Pardon me.
Vice president.
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Tim for vice president.
She nominated Tim Patterson for vice president.
Second.
I'm sorry, you made a second?
I did.
Okay. Take a roll call vote. Winta?
I'd say.
Riker-Patton?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yeah.
Nobby?
Yeah.
Bevington?
No.
Stewart?
No.
Cranville?
No.
Okay, so that is three yeses and three noes and an abstention. Jeff, what do we do in that case?
You guys are always trying to make things interesting. Mr. Winta, you sure you don't want to vote?
No, I wish I would have been had some heads up on this instead of kind of being blindsided.
I mean, you could take it, you could vote again or you could leave the floor open, which is probably the best thing to do, the floor open for other nominations or the second nomination.
I couldn't hear what Mike said.
I just would have preferred to know this ahead of time instead of to kind of... There's some things I would like to talk to Tim about. I guess one-on-one, and I'm not going to discuss here, and I don't think it's right at the proper place. I think it's in conversations with the curbs and tonight, face-to-face. Are you...? Let's see, am I to know?
He said he would have rather had a conversation with Tim before.
Okay, so then if Mike changes his vote, Jeff, he can do that, and now we're at three, four, so a motion failed?
I didn't hear Mike's vote, but whatever he voted, that would be held.
Okay.
No one is nominating anyone else.
But is anybody going to?
Okay, I would nominate Scott.
Second. Good.
Gabe? Take a roll call vote on Scott Bevington. Winta? Did you say yes? Okay. Riker-Patton?
No.
Patterson?
Yeah.
Nobby?
Yes.
Bevington?
Yes, a yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Cranville?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay.
Okay, minutes approved for the December 3 regular meeting. Someone like to make a motion to approve these minutes?
I have the motion to approve the minutes.
Someone want a second?
Yes, a second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? So moved. Is there any mail that we need to discuss?
Not...
No. Okay, anything from the county attorney?
Not this time.
Okay, reports, are there any committee reports? No committee reports. There's no commissioner representative here. So we'll move on to the transfers, additional reductions, additional appropriation to County General Fund 1,000, commissioners to account 30970, service contracts in the amount of $500,000.
And then by the emails, that is to pay for things that are women's work release, like the ARPA funds have been exhausted. So that's what that additional appropriation will be for.
If I'm not mistaken, Jane, the work release put up a half a million, we put up a million, the pledge to pay for the building and the rent.
I would have to look back in the minutes whether it was a million or a million and a half.
We pledged a million from our rainy day fund or from our excess, and I think they were... they pledged a half a million.
Right, which they have already contributed.
They have, so they don't want to take a half a million out of our million, right?
Yes.
We need to approve this.
Was that out, did we pledge that out of rainy day or excess?
You pledged it out of rainy day. So if that is still your desire, there is a resolution that will be presented later to make that transfer from rainy day to County General. But I know, like Councilman Winta indicated, if we have excess in, we have surplus in County General right now, so leave the money where it's at in rainy day and use that.
I like the way you said "right now." Okay.
Okay. Does someone want to make a motion to approve this?
We committed, I'll make a motion to accept it.
I'll second.
Jane, this has nothing to do with that resolution coming up. This is separate?
I'm sorry.
This is separate from the resolution?
It would be, yes. I mean, this has to be done regardless of whether you do the resolution.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, any nays? So moved. And then the 144 for the highway union employees.
That is, they renegotiated the contract this year, and so that was, they agreed upon the increases are $1.44 per hour for the union employees.
Okay, so the rate per hour for a truck driver is 21.88, heavy equipment operator 21.98, sign maintenance man 21.88, and garage mechanic 22.97 per hour. Does this need to be approved also?
Yes.
Okay, someone would like to make a motion to approve this?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? So moved. And now we're going to go to old business, which is courthouse security. And I had sent out a letter, but it was late today, so it didn't get sent out until after 4 o'clock. And I did not have Mr. Nobby's email, so I did not send it to him. And first of all, I want to welcome you, Gabe. Thank you for being on our Fayette County Council and your experience. We appreciate you. But as far as the courthouse security, and I've talked with Jane, and I've talked with three different law enforcement officers, and for us to have, we already have the metal detector. It's already here. And I go in and out of a lot of courthouses with the job that I have, and we are one of the few courthouses in the state that does not have a security system. And it's something that I think needs to be addressed, and we've talked about it on different occasions, but we've never followed through with anything. And tonight, that's the reason that I wanted to put on the agenda so it could be discussed and so we can move forward with this. So to, and I talked with Sheriff Zack Jones, if he wants to make any comments, we would need two men to secure the door, and we would use the north side entrance of the building, which is handicap accessible, it is close to the elevators, it has steps and the parking lot is in good condition. So...
Does that mean we'd lock the front too?
All the rest of the doors would be locked. When you have a security system in place like that, you have one entrance, and everyone would have to go through that entrance at all times. No one would be able to go in and out the other doors, because I know the conversation that the last time we discussed this, they had said that people would let, like, go to the door and let people in and stuff like that, and that would not be tolerated. You cannot do that. There's one entrance, that's why it's a security system.
I think it's a great idea.
And so to hire two, starting pay right now for an officer would be $43,000, and we would have two, that would be $86,000, and they would be considered full-time, because the courthouse opens lots of times at 7:00 a.m., and they are here till 4:30. So for, they would be full-time. And then there are evenings at court less later, and like with us here tonight, there would be security here while we are here in the courthouse. So, and if you read the letter, I'm just kind of going to go over it, because there is a no-gun policy in our handbook, so people are not allowed to carry a gun. And if there's no security and there's no guns allowed, what would we do for security if something happened? If we had to call the police, yes, Sheriff Jones is usually at our meetings, but if we were in a meeting and things happened, or in the courtrooms, because in the courtrooms, I mean, you have divorces, evictions, people lose their children, I mean, there's a lot of trauma that happens during court. Emotions rise high and people, things happen. I mean, you can read it in the news, you can, I mean, it's obvious. And yes, we're a small rural town, but reality is, it's something that needs to be addressed. And then I feel like that employees, I have not talked to the employees, so I cannot tell you their feelings, but I feel like employees would feel safer if they knew that there was a security system in place. And like I said, I've been into a lot of courthouses, small and large, and you can't even take a cell phone into the courthouse. And we are one of the few that does not have a security system. Yes, go ahead.
I feel that we, this was thoroughly covered in our budgetary meetings, and we all agree that we need to do that. There was a conversation of what had to be done, and what had to be built between those two doors.
Yes.
And that was all discussed in the budgetary meetings. I'm 99.9% sure we all agreed to do that.
And we agreed to postpone it too, to a later date. So that was something that, that's when we talked about that. I said, well, I really think it's something that we need to move on, and it was not, it was not, it was tabled. So, and to me, and this is what I put in later, taking proactive steps to avoid a problem or a negative situation is always preferable to trying to fix it once it, than waiting to try to fix it once it has occurred. Essentially, it's better to anticipate and address potential issues before they become full-blown problems. The focus on the courthouse security is acting beforehand to minimize the chances of something negative happening. And it would be, and I talked with Jane, and she said that with benefits, it would be around $100,000. And since there is a surplus, and I'm not trying to spend a lot of money, but I do feel like that the cost of maybe someone's life or preventing something from happening to our constituents and the employees, the prosecutors, the judges, the attorneys that come in this building, I think it's something that that needs to be addressed. Sheriff Jones, would you want to reiterate anything on this?
Yeah, I agree. It's, like you said, most courthouses have security. We don't. We haven't had anything bad happen yet, but the emergency button is hit quite often, and jail officers or road deputies, if they're at the jail, come running across. A lot of times, it's nothing, but every now and again, there's something going on here that we have to act. And having somebody here to react as opposed to hoping road deputies across the road here, it's a lot better to have them here. How it works, that's for the commissioners and you guys to figure out, I guess. But in my, my opinion, you got two people that man this, this door here, and then the reason you have two, if there's an emergency, one can respond and one can stay at the door if need be, unless you lock the whole place down, which I don't know if that's necessary. So that's why I think two is essential to have over here.
Is that requiring hiring two more officers?
We would have to hire two additional officers. I would probably, I just talked to the commissioners today and started a jail deputy program where they got bulletproof vests, some of the jail officers and guns, because they're doing transports without these things. And if you've ever driven in a police car in downtown Indianapolis with an inmate in the back and no gun, you get a little scared sometimes. So I would probably put two of the jail deputies over here, and then we just have to replace them over there.
Well, if I was intent upon killing somebody, the last place I, well, really, the first place I'd ever go is having somebody with a sign saying "no guns allowed," because the last thing they want to do is get shot. So I see that, I said, that's stupid. Say rattlesnakes running around here, I'm leaving.
Oh, yeah. And again, that's, that's something for the commissioners to decide on what they want to allow in the courthouse. The judge, they don't want weapons or cell phones in their courtrooms, video cameras, that's not allowed. But as far as everything else, that's up to the commissioners, I guess.
But at this point, they, everyone comes in, and we don't know if they're...
Yeah, we have no idea what they're...
There's no idea if anybody has a weapon, there's, and they have their cell phones, of course, because I've been in court where the judges had to say, "Put your cell phones away," because they're sitting there using them while court is going on. So if it was a case of security, when they walk through the metal detector, all that is detected, and they would not be able to enter into the courthouse with those items on them.
We got called over a couple of weeks ago because the city police undercover drug detective, who's in plain clothes, was carrying his gun, and he's walking down the hallway, and somebody didn't recognize him, and they hit the emergency button, and we come over, and it was him.
How long would it take you to get here?
It usually, it varies. It usually takes between a minute and three or four minutes. So it's, it's usually a quick response time, but usually it's a jail officer.
Two more officers for something, you can be here in a minute's time.
Usually. Usually it's a jail officer without a gun.
You know how fast a bullet can go? Do you know how fast someone can take out a gun and shoot someone?
Have we had it happen? No.
Why would you wait for it?
Yeah, that's a bad way to think.
Yeah.
We haven't had an active shooter in the schools yet either, but we got security there just in case.
That was the most irresponsible thing I've ever heard in my life today.
Yeah, we got, we like to be proactive as opposed to reactive.
Absolutely. Don't wait for it to happen.
The panic button?
Do we used to have something here?
Uh, they still work. We get, we get it all the time over at the jail. I have no idea in here. Way takes care of all that.
What was your question?
The panic button.
Every office, some offices have more than one.
We used to have something here.
Oh, right here, but Sharon?
Okay.
Do you want me to get it and see how long it takes to get them here?
Yeah.
Don't test them out.
Oh, no. Come on, Zach. I'm kidding.
Trying to think what I got working.
I do got a question for you.
Yes.
So you said you want two guys on at a time. So how would you handle, like, some days off, because those two guys aren't going to work every day? So would you have an officer that would rotate over here, or would it really be two and a half?
Uh, yeah, we got, like I said, two guys, and then, just like in the jail, if somebody calls off or somebody's on vacation, we just fill it with overtime. So it would be if we got extra staff working, we put them over here, rotate the schedules around. There would be some overtime involved, because if you want two people all the time, you really need to hire three, but, or a part-time person. But usually, it's just cheaper to pay some overtime for somebody to fill in for a shift.
I don't know if they need to go to restroom, or they need lunch, or, I mean, bitches.
Two people makes sense.
It was my business for 40 years as a real estate appraiser to serve six counties. I have never once in one of those courthouses seen a security, been checked for anything.
Well, thank God.
Well, yeah. I mean, but you're saying you're all over the place, you've got them. Where are they at? Westfield have them, Union County?
Yeah, Franklin County has them.
Yeah, Westfield, Franklin County. You may not have been in those courthouses lately.
Yeah, you haven't been into them lately, because you can't even, at Wayne County, you can't even step into a place with a cell phone. They check your person.
Wayne County's got it locked down, been tied.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. There's, yeah, they're, they're in all the courthouses.
I could, I can send out an email to all the sheriffs and find out. I think last time somebody sent an email, there's an email group for all the sheriffs, and I think there was, it was, it was almost 90-some percent of courthouses. Not every courthouse in Indiana has it, but it's pretty, pretty close.
I don't think it's necessary to do that, because it's just kind of sense. It's just, I don't care if it's not happening yet or anything.
Well, Franklin County and Union County, I talked with people from there both today. And Franklin County, Judge Cox is definitely, before he went out, he was pursuing that. And Union County, and I was told, this is, I mean, I don't know what they'll do, but they said that if Fayette County did it, they would probably follow suit. That's what they said. Because we are three of one of the few counties that does not have security.
And what's stupid is we've got the, that's in here for years.
That's what I said. This is, I mean, it's laying there, and it's, and we have staff that can set it up.
The taxpayer is really good at the money that they've spent, or whatever, the grandmothers that's in there, they would be just sitting here, just pissed, just complaining.
Yeah, Jarboe could set it up. Michael King can set up computers and phones. I think it, it's really doable. It's just, it comes down to money.
Yeah.
And the idea of the will to do it, I guess, the commissioners.
What are you looking for, a motion to get this thing done?
Yes, right. We would have to take it out of the...
Rainy day one.
Oh, the rainy day, we were...
Will it fall under commissioners?
No.
Chief for Jane?
We, council is in charge of the number of employees in the county, so it would be a council decision to add two employees.
I'm asking whose budget it would come under, not whether it...
Come out of the jail budget, sheriff's budget. County General either way.
You got a jail lit, you got public safety, the world is probably, jail lit, you probably saw that if you had to, because your, your serving purpose for the jail as well, security, I mean, if you want to bend, if you want to look at it like that, public safety, it fits into it too.
The public safety is already gone.
So is your jail lit?
Yeah.
I'm just saying, is that, is it...
I know, but I'm financially, it's County General's generally option, because your other budgets are already fully spent or overspent.
How much do we, do we know how much it would cost to actually install that? Because that, I mean, you're, you just throw it up and...
I can't speak for Jarboe, but I would assume that that's something, he's pretty handy. He could probably, I assume there's some, well, I don't know if there's instructions anymore to it, but you could probably find them somewhere on the internet, because it's about seven years old. But I would assume he could put it up.
I mean, I know that there's, you have that, but then there's also other logistical things that you have to do things as well to lock the doors and stuff. So how much would all that cost? I think that's a question we need to answer.
I would like to, for us to get some harder numbers before we move forward, but, but not put it off any. I mean, just table it until next month and try to get some harder numbers.
Table it to get the money, yeah.
And then try to figure out where we can get the money from.
How, do you want to get the numbers? Do you want me to get the numbers? Can you do that since you know? Okay.
I mean, because, I mean, just, just in terms of cost with two extra employees, it's going to be over a hundred, for sure.
Oh, yeah, but for the two people to man it is what...
Well, but no, I mean, that's just salary. That's not their insurance costs, their FICA and all that.
Well, that would be included in that, but that would be included in the $100,000, right? We were, we were guesstimating it, but it would be round about.
It's going to be, it'd probably be around that.
A little bit.
Part of it would depend on what kind of...
...in there as well to cover those.
How single guys...
Single, single people or people under 26 that are still on their parents' insurance.
Yeah, that would be good.
Yeah.
Zach, can you include in there what your projected overtime would be to cover those?
I could, yeah.
Because you're going to have council meetings, no, the meetings here at the courthouse after hours.
Yeah. Yeah, I can figure that out, depending on their, yeah, vacation and whatnot.
Okay, so then we can probably safely say we can have those numbers by the next meeting in February?
I can get it together.
Okay, thank you.
Like, we, I remember working on this with Adrian Ellis, so this is something that we've been trying to get forever, and the commissioners have always pushed back on it, but it's something that's needed. I mean, again, I understand, it hasn't happened yet, but a lot of things haven't happened yet, but we still try to take care of it before it happens. So if we can get that done, that'd be great.
Thank you. Thank you. So we will put that on the agenda for February.
Also with this, do we know the, how the commissioners feel about this? I mean, we could add the positions, but do we get to dictate how those things are, where that money is going to go?
We would as far as the employees and the commissioners, pardon me.
I was going to say, I'm wanting for Jeff to speak up here.
Mr. Wesley, what is your comment on this?
Okay, so I would agree that you guys are responsible for the amount of employees, but I, I'm struggling with the, the whole, like, job description and duties. I think it's, my hope is that the commissioners agree with whatever you guys do anyways, and we'll have to go down this road, but, but actually instituting the, the security at the front of the courthouse, to me, is a commissioner's decision. But my hope is that you guys are communicating with them and everybody's in agreement. My guess would be commissioners are going to be very excited about it if you guys say you can fund it. So that would be, I would, I'm struggling to see how we get through, the council gets to make the complete decision.
I have spoke with Tracy in depth about this, Tracy Beaver, so I have not with Dale Munson.
On Tracy, you've been on?
Pardon me?
On Tracy.
Tracy's on board with it for sure. So, but Dale Strong or Dale Munson, I have not spoke with about it. I mean, in meetings that they've been here, they've heard me talk about it, but there's never, you know, like they said, there was always a little bit of pushback on it. Tracy has not been present during those meetings, but we have had in-depth discussion on this. Okay, so are you suggesting that we have a, a meeting with the commissioners or just speak with them and see what their viewpoint is on this, Jeff?
I would take one or two of, you know, have a conversation with these one or two of them, kind of get their, just kind of get their vibes on, on, with where their heads at on it. And my guess is, we don't need to stress this, because my guess is, if you guys say, hey, the funding is there, we can make it work financially, the commissioners are going to be very excited about that. So, I mean, let's, let's just have a conversation with them first before we get too stressed about what all, if we're overreaching or not.
Okay.
I will say one thing, the one thing I do want to say though, and you guys probably already know this, a couple thoughts, just because I go to a lot of courthouses. If you're going to do this, I keep hearing the metal detector, that we have this metal detector, which I, I'm led to believe is just this, like, archway that you walk through, and it decides if you have metal, if you have metal, right? Or if you have something, it could be a firearm. I don't know that I've ever been to a place that doesn't also have, like, a conveyor belt that you, that you pin things through. And so I don't know... And so I don't know that I've ever seen that kind of equipment. So I, just listening to you guys, I do think there's going to be more of an upfront cost to equipment than what you guys are maybe thinking at this moment. I'm not saying it'll be anything that would deter you, but I'm just saying just something to keep them on.
Yes, now one thing that I do not know is if there was a conveyor belt. I don't know. I just know that they had the metal detectors. Zach is shaking his head.
Yeah, I don't think there was.
Wayne County's got a conveyor belt.
Yeah, so does Rush County. Almost everyone that I've been in has the conveyor belts.
Yeah, conveyor belt with the computer and that's, I don't know that this would be very efficient if you didn't have those kind of equipment. And so, I mean, you'd have to almost go through every purse or something. I don't, I don't know how you'd make it work without that. And I don't know the price on those things, but just something for you guys to research till next meeting.
Okay, so are there's things that you can find out for us too, Zach?
I will try.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, uh, new business is Sheriff Zach Jones, commissary report.
All right, just real quick. This is something that. Take one, pass it please. This is something that the sheriff has supposed to, is supposed to do twice a year. I've been there for twenty, twenty-five years now. I'm not sure the sheriff's ever done this. State Board of Counsel reminded me, so this is why it's being done.
It's stapled together.
Yeah, if you just take one and, uh, this is through the month of, from June twenty-twenty-four to November twenty-twenty-four. My secretary couldn't get December quite done yet. There's a lot of work put into this, I guess. This is just an accounting of our commissary account. The reason I don't have to come over and ask for all kinds of money for equipment or other things is because we let the inmates pay for it. Our commissary takes care of us pretty good. There's a lot of equipment, uh, we pay for, um, I think our internet out of it. We pay for, so the county don't have to pay for these things. We pay for the inmates TVs out of this. There's just a lot of things that we take care of out of our commissary account that we don't have. It doesn't have to come out of the general fund. But this is again, is just an accounting of what we spend out of it. And then I think our balance is on there. The balance goes up and down because the way we have to pair commissary company, but. Lot of uniforms, um, a lot of police officer gear that you see on there. Some, uh, Amazon, if you see Kroger or stuff like that, Nancy Bollander, she takes care of extra commissary. There's certain things that we just can't get that the inmates need that she'll go and buy and then they, uh, they buy it for a little bit of an increased price. If you have any questions, I'll try to answer them. But again, this is something that I plan on bringing to you again in June or July, just to comply with something that we've never complied with, trying to make it right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
If you have any questions about it, if you go through it and you want to email me or call me, feel free to.
So resolution to transfer from rainy day to county general.
As I mentioned, I emailed the proposal. My thought is to just take it out of the surplus that we have. Instead of taking it out of rainy day.
What's the amount?
Five hundred thousand.
How much?
Five hundred thousand.
Half million. But the, what was the surplus as of, of December thirty-first, Jane?
It was over six million.
Over six.
Six million, three hundred and eighty thousand.
How much is in our rainy day fund? Supposed to be worth it.
Couldn't tell.
Couldn't tell me?
It's over three million.
We got three million in that? Well, that's half as much as what we've got in the whole general fund.
You look at the financial report that Jane sent, you'll see everything.
I'm sorry. I brought it with me. But thanks for the advice.
So is this something that someone wants to comment, discuss?
Should we take it out of the surplus?
Take it out of surplus instead of the rainy day.
A second.
I would agree with that.
Okay, so Mike made a motion, Kay second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nays? You, you're having your nay? Okay. No. Okay. So, uh, we're going to take it out of the surplus instead of the rainy day fund. And then we're going to approve the encumbrances.
Do you have a total on that chair? What's that?
It is a hundred and thirty thousand, one hundred and sixty-seven dollars and ninety-seven cents.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Nays? So moved. Okay. Okay, so the resolution, we do not need a sign, it was not approved. Okay. All right, if there's no further, anything on the agenda?
What was your question, Sharon?
What about appointments?
Four appointments.
Okay. I do not have a copy of that for you. Thank you. Okay. The Fayette County Economic Development Board is up. The Eastern Indiana Regional Planning Commissioner, Fayette County Alcohol Beverage, Sam Harvey. Is he still wanting to do that? Do we know?
I believe so. I believe he is.
The Alcoholic Beverage Board.
The Alcohol Board.
Alcohol Board, no, it says alcoholic.
I'll see you that time too.
So have, has anybody discussed it with Sam?
He keeps sitting, he, I think he's.
He's been, yeah. Okay, Fayette County Extension Board, Kay, you have been on that.
Yeah, I'll keep the extension and four H.
Okay, so. Okay, the nine-one advisory board. I think, Tim, didn't you go to that?
No, I didn't.
I think that was Jim.
Was that Jim? Because, no, Jim was on the Corrections Advisory Board.
Okay.
Then Mike was on the Fayette County Tax and Abatement Advisory Board.
That was traded with something with Joe, I think. You have to nine-one-one, he's the Tax Payman.
So which one were you on then?
Nine-one-one.
Do you want to stay on that?
Sure.
Okay. So the Economic Development, uh, Board and then.
You go, opposed nominee here to do that.
I can't hear you.
Nominate you to do that.
You were nominating me to do that on which one?
Just the different flavor, just viewpoint, you got business.
Wasn't that yours, Scott?
Whatever, whatever council wants to do.
Okay. And then the Regional Planning Commissioner. Okay. So.
Eastern Indiana Regional Planning Commissioner. I told Tim I would take that for you.
Tim had that last year.
Yeah, I told him I would take it for him.
Oh, I thought you said Jim, I'm sorry.
Tim.
Okay.
Which one? Um, that'd be, that'd be to the committee assignments.
Okay. Okay.
You said Sam, I'm trying to keep up.
Yes, Sam.
Who did you say for the Community Corrections Advisory Board?
I don't.
That was Jim's.
That was Jim, we haven't said anybody on that.
Okay.
Tim said he'd take it.
So that's the one Jim was on, right? Community Corrections, so Tim.
So right now Scott's not on anything and Gabe's not on anything.
What was Wayne said was on the board?
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Mike, what did you nominate me for?
You did, Jim.
I can nominate development.
Do we need to vote on those or?
We need some solid waste.
Wait until you're done, if you want to.
Do you want to give up solid waste, Sharon? Give to either Scott or?
Yeah, I, 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 yeah.
Well, that one was actually a four-year term and Sharon would be it.
Where's?
I guess you can give somebody else to take the rest for it. It's okay, I just didn't have that one highlighted, but you could give it up, I guess, if you want to. Someone else take over the remainder of the four-year term? Jeff, is that how that works?
Yeah, you can do that.
Okay.
Okay, and then the Eastern, would you have appointed anyone to the Eastern Regional Planning Commissioner?
So that's why Kay said she would take.
No, she would have stood Tim.
The commissioners reappointed me.
She was doing the Extension Board and the four H.
What, Scott?
Right, but I told Tim.
But she also said she was taking the Eastern, she would take Eastern Indiana from Tim.
He would, okay.
Was on that one before. So right now we've got nine-eleven, tax abatement, and then solid waste. So who was going to take over for, for you from solid waste?
I don't know. No one has said anything.
What do they need?
Theirs is only like quarterly, maybe. I think it's quarterly.
Mike, did you want to stay on the tax abatement?
Yeah, I think that's at like four o'clock.
We switched, you guys switched that one, like, that's why we're probably getting notifications to Kelly, but. We switched it a while ago, a while ago, it was a, coverage of Voltrips, get more stats. Yeah. So I was on nine-one-one. Jim took tax abatement. When that, when that was done, I didn't know. That was switched, middle of the year.
I can do the tax abatement, Sharon, if nobody minds.
Okay.
So you solid waste?
Solid waste for Gabe?
Gabe's going to do solid waste?
Is that what he said?
I couldn't hear.
That's what I asked for.
Okay, so Scott will be doing the tax abatement. Okay, Kay, he's got those two. And then the Economic Development. How often do they meet, Scott?
Uh, every other month.
Which one we talking about?
The Economic Development.
EDG? That's the one you were taking, Sharon?
Yes. Okay, so I have the Economic Development Board would be me. Uh, Eastern Indiana Regional Planning Commissioner, Kay. Sam Harvey on the Alcohol Beverage Board. The Fayette County Extension Board, Kay Peyton. Four H, Kay. Nine-one-one Advisory Board, Mike Winta. Community Corrections, Tim Patterson. Abatement Advisory Committee, Scott Bevington. And Fayette County Solid Waste Board, Gabe Knobby. And then the Area Plan Commission would still be Gary Nayler and Bob Stewart.
Yes.
Okay. Does someone want to make a motion to approve this?
Make a motion to approve the council appointment, Miss?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Okay, so moved.
Committee.
Okay.
Oh, you only have two, salary and wage are budgeted.
Okay, okay. Okay. Okay, and the Budget Committee, um, I would like, I would like to do the Budget Committee. And this is, uh, and I know Scott was on it. And Gabe has, were you not on the Budget Committee, Gabe?
Yeah, I was on her, oh, put it here.
Yes, so, um, that is something that I was thinking. And then the Salary and Wage, who? I don't know who's on that right now.
That was Jim, Tim, and. Bob.
I was on.
Yes, yeah. Mike made the budget and everybody else was salary.
Okay. Okay, so the Salary and Wage.
Would then be Gabe, Mike, and?
Gabe is on the budget.
Oh.
Oh, that's, that's what we're putting down, Gabe, Scott, myself. Now Salary and Wage, Mike, would you want to be on that?
Which one?
The Salary and Wage.
Oh.
And who else was on it? Tim?
Who's on Salary and Wage, yeah?
Sure.
Okay. And. We would need one more, right, three on that, or is it just two?
Um, normally it'd be three.
Three? Okay. So Kay, that would leave you or Bob. Are you already on a committee?
No, if I can help it.
Oh, okay, you don't have to be.
No, it's no problem, I can help whatever you want me on.
Are you asking me to be on the budget? Oh, sorry.
Salary and Wage would be Mike, Tim. And, uh, you or Bob and Bob. I don't know that he wants to do that. I'm just asking.
I'm still not sure which one you're asking me to be on.
The Salary and Wage.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay. Okay, so, so Salary and Wage would be Mike, Winta, Tim Patterson, Kay Peyton. Budget Committee would be Gabe Knobby, Scott Bevington, Sharon Cranfield. Are there any discrepancies on that? Anyone? Does someone want to make a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, any nays? So moved. Okay. Is there any other? Pending?
I think that was everything.
Okay, wow. That went pretty good. We got a lot accomplished, so.
Madam President, I'm going to add back to the agenda, uh, the open comments I used to be.
That would be something that the board needs to. That would be something that the board needs to decide.
It should be open comments from the... Public, you know.
From the public.
It used to be on your own time. Wait, can I just take one? I just think it's non-welcoming to not have it on.
Well, it's not welcoming. I think if you look foolish, you're not prepared for what somebody else has to ask you.
Wait, you still take one?
But I think sometimes with the agenda, this is my take on it. There will be availability, but I don't know that we should have it at every meeting to worry, you know? That's my opinion. But the board needs to vote on that if they want it to be open comments or not.
Well, when we begin a meeting, we can get approval of the meeting here and is there any other thing to be added to it at that point in time? So I want to talk and do a act on that before we even start the meeting. Do we have a accept this agenda, is anything to be added to it? Let's put public comments, if you want to put that on the end of it.
How's the city handle that, Gabe?
So at the city, we did have it on there. And every meeting had it on there. It wasn't used all the meetings, but it was on there. It's also on the school board at every meeting. Personally, I think we should have it. I mean, we're public officials and we should be held accountable by the public. So if they got an issue, they bring it up and we should be here to hear. That's just my thoughts on it.
Thing about doing it at the start of the meeting is the fact that we put down who is going to comment. I mean, sometimes you may get 10, 15 people here and four or five of them for the same purpose. And just who's going to be making comments and put in the minutes to comment at the end of the meeting.
We have an open debate, we can't... We had at the end of the meetings, we had Don or whoever, you know, 30 or 50 people. Those 50 people talked the same thing.
This is typically always been at the end of the meeting. I know most committees like this always do it.
We've done that before. I mean, when people are here and we know they have something that they want to say, we'll offer them that. But I mean, I don't have a problem with it either way. So is that something we need to discuss and add to the agenda, approve it, or...
I mean, if you... If everybody agrees they want it on the agenda, I'll put it on the agenda.
Open discussion? I mean, that's basically what it would be.
Like just patron concerns and then...
Okay.
It's your intent to let whoever here speak on whatever.
Well, we approved the minutes in the last meeting. We can also ask for approval for if someone hears anything to be added. And I've done that many times. If there's anything to be added to the minutes that you put out for this meeting tonight and it can be added to it at that time. But you do what you want, it don't make a difference to me one way or another.
Okay. So how do you want that worded?
How we used to word it, Jane?
It just said patron concerns.
Okay, someone want to make a motion to have that put on the agenda?
Someone make a motion.
Pardon me?
You started voting down there, this here's right here. You don't want to be the first one all the time.
Oh, unless it's a roll... That's funny, unless it's a roll call. I'll start starting in the middle or something and then work my way up. How's that?
Get me the motion also.
I just say, yeah, there's a motion on the floor, so...
Who's second? All in favor?
Aye.
Nays?
And Madam President, can we add back on open prayer at the beginning as well?
Absolutely. So am I supposed to invite them or who?
They're supposed to come to you.
I invited Eric Dawkins and Ellis McQueen, whoever you want.
Okay.
They're supposed to vote on her. Or are they supposed to solicit by number correctly?
There are...
So she's going to make a notice, everybody that they can come to.
Mike has to reach for it.
Everybody does, just have a location or whatever it is. Whether atheist or whatever, Christian or whatever they are. I believe Jeff, Jeff, what's the notification on that? How's that word?
Okay, so we have a policy, like, I know we do it at the city and I think we do it at county level, too. And it's essentially, we just send out a... We follow that policy. Jane, you know if we have it in the county?
We do, we do have a policy, yes.
And so what you do is you just follow rules. I think if we send a notice to the... You have like a religious... I don't know how to describe it right now, I'm going blank. It's essentially a group of churches that get together, a council, so to speak, and people just sign up via that list.
A ministerial association.
There you go, that's the word I was looking for. Hold on. Yeah, so they just sign up via that list from the people. And the key is, you just have to allow anybody.
So they would be from the ministerial association?
Correct.
I wouldn't say that.
They would. But Jeff, if you had...
Go ahead.
If you had people from other groups who do not belong to the ministerial association, we still have to allow them equal time, right?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Equal opportunity. Equal time, I pray for an hour and a half.
Okay. So we need to make a motion for that, to have someone? Or that can just be as this?
Jeff, do they need to make a motion to do that?
It was just an invitation.
It's a party, a county-wide ordinance.
Okay, so, yeah.
Okay.
They used to just contact me and then they would just say, so and so. And we talked to make sure they knew that, that was built.
No one has ever contacted me.
Probably because they don't know, they don't think why.
Right. Okay. All right, so does someone want to make... Mike already made one motion to adjourn. Anyone else?
All second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
No nays? Approved. We're closed.